With hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community in charge of conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law, but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly in respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests, following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. And when kind comes for this, we can, if we have anyone that's wishing to speak, we can go over those directions then. So with that being said, Kyle, I think we have the roll call, please?
Aiden Warner.
Here.
Mr. Hyde. Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mrs. Jackie, I'm here, Davis.
Here.
Mr. Stabell.
Here.
Mr. Groll.
Here.
Mr. Ziegler.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. Okay, presentations tonight. Fred Mark is back with more great news.
We're getting there.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for the invitation. We are approaching a very exciting time at Stamp. I don't know if you've driven out there recently. Plug Power is well under construction. You can see their hydrogen spheres look like giant golf balls on tees out there are almost pretty well put together. That's what will store the liquid hydrogen. And then they've got the site completely graded, stoned. I believe they're going to start working on the building very, very soon. National Grid is out there, working on the power line reroute. So if you drive down Crosby Road, there's a power line that crosses over. That line's going to be rerouted. That'll open up the main campus on the west side of Crosby up there. So Grid should have that completed by probably March or April. So they're well underway of that. If you get to the north end of Crosby, you'll see that there's an entranceway kind of being constructed in there. That's going to go back and access the substation. So the giant power lines that cross over Lewiston, there's going to be a substation built that'll basically take a couple of those two towers down. They'll run the power lines through the substation. It'll connect into the reroute that National Grid is doing, and that'll bring a line down to the plug site for them to have power to be able to do their operations. So the construction of that substation is beginning as well. From a project standpoint, everything in yellow are projects that are currently looking at Stamp. The majority of these are looking at federal dollars from the CHIPS Act. From what we have heard now, it sounds like applications can be made for the CHIPS Act in February. So there's a lot of activity right now of companies trying to identify sites because they have to identify a site when they submit for it. So the CHIPS Act would go towards supporting semiconductor industry or semiconductor support companies, companies that would make equipment that go inside of semiconductors. So we do have one project that is a semiconductor support company that would be about six hundred jobs. We're hoping to hear from them very soon. We are a finalist in that between two sites, one here and another state. We have another project that is a high-tech manufacturer. They are three sites in three states, with Stamp being one of them as well. We also have a varying array of small semiconductors, battery factories, solar cells, solar wafer, other semiconductor equipment companies. They all range from a hundred jobs to the biggest one, I think, is probably, probably three thousand. So we could end up with one, we could end up with three. It's going to be interesting to see if a lot of these companies all want to submit our site into that CHIPS Act funding. So we'll have to see, but I think the next few months are going to be hectic, exciting, and hopefully very, very fruitful. So we continue to make significant progress. I think in the last three weeks, we've had four site visits from companies from overseas looking to invest in the U.S. in their first manufacturing facilities. So what we're seeing globally is obviously cost of gas, cost of fuel, as well as instability in some of the areas where some of these companies either are producing or concern about potential instability with other things that are going on specifically in Asia that they're looking at. They need to have a facility potentially in the U.S. to help insulate them a little bit from some of those issues politically that are happening around the globe. So we're getting a lot of attention, we're getting a lot of interest. Wish we had more acreage. If we had more acreage, we'd probably get more of them, but we do feel very, very good that the next few months will be extremely exciting for us. So I don't know if you have any questions on projects or infrastructure related? Again, love to take anybody out anytime you want to go out, give you a tour, point out what we got going on out there and what's going to be located where and what we're under construction for.
For the solar projects in our district, can you update us on those? You negotiate the pilots on behalf for them?
So I think Cider Solar is the one that's, I think, in your district. I think the village town of Oakfield, village town of Elba, I think have all come together. I think forty percent of it is in the Oakfield district. None of that's been approved publicly yet. I think they're finalizing those. I think we did share some potential preliminary numbers. Didn't want those going out anywhere until we were finalized. So once we get those signed off on, we'll be sharing those. I just, I don't want to speak publicly to you because we haven't done anything on the public level yet.
And the project in Alabama, is that not close?
So they still come to the town of Alabama Board meetings. They're talking about making their application, I think, next year. So I think they're finishing up a lot of their environmental, their surveys. I think they're going to, when they say their application, I think they mean their ninety-four seat application, which is the state siting process, which I think, once you apply, that is set at twelve months for approval. So I think their plan is next spring to apply. When they get to that point, we'll sit down and start working on the pilot and the host agreement with them on how all that will work. And I think last I heard, that was a hundred and thirty-five megawatts is what they were planning. I don't know if that's still the same size.
The expansion of the plant for the semiconductors out towards Albany?
Yep.
Is there a Toga maybe?
Yep.
Is that an extension of what was already existing there, or is that something new that was, was ever considering at Stamp?
So Micron did originally consider Stamp. What we saw happening was when Stamp was designed, it was designed for three fabs. When the CHIPS Act came out, all of the semiconductors went from three to eight. So basically, their utility requirements went from five MGD to twenty-five, thirty, forty million gallons per day of water that they would need. So once they grew that large, the site in Syracuse had much larger water, wastewater capacities. It is still a good thing for us. That decision could help sway one of the semiconductor support industries to come here because they're looking at, there's an Intel facility in Ohio that was announced. So they're trying to figure out a way to serve us both. We're almost kind of in the middle. So that works out well for us. We are also the last mega-site in New York State that's available for acreage too. So we are getting a lot of attention. There are some smaller fabs that would fit within our utility requirements that are looking at the site, more niche, what they call niche fabs. But what we've seen with all of those large projects is, I mean, they, once the green chips money came out, or the chips money came out, they Forexed all of their projects because they could get up to three billion dollars through the federal legislation.
The Plug Power, weren't they originally supposed to be up and running? I thought they said, I think this fall, I know they've had some setbacks, but what's their projected?
They were hoping, I think, right now, a lot of it's going to be driven by the substation and when that can be energized. I know that the transformers have been ordered. I think they were ordered back in June, and I think they were like a fifty-week kind of lead time, so the large transformers take the longest. So I think right now, they are looking at early spring to mid-spring, I think, of 2024. So either end of 2023 or early 2024, when they would be up and running. Now, they've looked at potentially getting started sooner without the large substation and getting some temporary power. They're working on that as well, and Grid may incorporate that in with the reroute also.
And what was the employment number there, Mark, that you're hoping for?
So they're going to have, they pledged-
I think you told us before, I just can't remember.
Yep, they pledged to create thirty jobs onsite and then an additional thirty-eight jobs that would be truck drivers.
Okay.
And we've had a lot of companies come in that have strategic relationships with Plug already. A lot of companies are looking to diversify their portfolio specifically into green energy because of a lot of the, some of the European companies we talked to have signed on to European agreements to be net carbon neutral, net carbon zero by a certain timeframe. So a lot of those companies are looking at a lot of those renewable options, and that's why Stamp's so attractive with the hydrogen power coming from Niagara Falls, is that helps them be green to green, so to speak, or have a zero-carbon footprint, which is what a lot of them are looking to do.
Any suggestions, guys?
I did bring Chris with me. One of the other pieces that we get into quite a bit, Chris Lozzi from our office. One of the other things that we've really had to get involved in is workforce training and workforce programs. And Chris has done a great job leading our workforce programs, and I thought I'd just have him come in and kind of update everybody as far as the programs we've got going on and what's available out there, specifically for kids in high school, too. I think that's, that's the big piece.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. So you can hear, Mark, on the, our sales funnel, a lot of exciting projects, and we're in the thick of things, and it's exciting times, as you mentioned. So just passing things around, I just kind of made a one-page your back-up front here of a lot of the things we're doing in workforce development. And the first one is, I do this thing called Coach Swaz. Been here at Oakfield and all the schools in Genesee County. And what I do is talk about why kids are taking STEM and the need for STEM and skilled trades, and kind of bring that in line to our companies that are local. So that next slide there is all the logos of companies in Genesee County that are hiring, of course. And a lot of times, it's, students don't know as well as the parents don't know, guides, counselors, and teachers about the companies, and they know about some of them, but we have such a big array of them that we want to make sure everybody understands that. And then to further entice students, Glow With Your Hands, I'm co-chairman of that event. If you hadn't heard about Glow With Your Hands, we had our fourth year this year. We had a thousand students at the Genesee County Fairgrounds, about sixty-four different companies there where they had hands-on activities. Everything from hitting an excavator to a backhoe, to a hammering competition, to looking at some of our new mechatronics equipment. Then there's a salary survey in there, and it's really talking about skilled trades and STEM careers that a lot of times you don't need a college degree. So we're really trying to focus kids on college, our career pathways versus college pathways. But either way, if you're going in both those directions, if you're in STEM and skilled trades, that's going to be the highest return on your investment because you're going to be a hundred percent employable, and they're paying the highest salaries. So we really encourage that. The mechatronics equipment is next. We were able to, Mark and I, were able to get some funding through economic development money. We spent seven hundred thousand dollars and bought new mechatronics equipment for Bosse's. So in eleventh and twelfth grade, the kids are part of the Finger Lakes Youth Apprenticeship Program as well. And in eleventh grade, they're doing a job shadow, in twelfth grade, they're doing a paid internship. So that technician-level training is everything we're looking for at Stamp. I mean, all those jobs are going to be, about eighty percent of the jobs that we're hiring at Stamp is going to be technician-level training. So all companies need that though now. All the food processing companies and all the companies we have here currently, even US Gibson and everybody here locally, Bondewell as well, they all need these technicians. And they've all been really gravitating towards this program and doing a lot of good stuff with lunch and learn sessions to, to the hands-on activities as we talked about. The other kind of things that we utilize, some of the mechatronics equipment, we're training a pre-apprenticeship boot camp, it's called. So kids that are eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds that are high school graduates, we've been doing a six-week program in the summer. Usually it's July, in this case, coming up this year, it's July tenth to August twenty-fourth. For six weeks, we do an earn-as-you-learn program. So somebody that has a high school degree or even a college degree, doesn't matter, we'll train them Monday through Thursday for free at Bosse's. And then in the afternoon, we pair them up with a company, and they work in the afternoon and all day Fridays, so they can be twenty-four hours paid for six weeks. And then they can stay with the company at the end of it and walk into the company's own apprenticeship program. The other cool program we did last year, we were hoping for more numbers, was called Cornell High School. So what I was able to do there is have Cornell teach a three-day boot camp, we call it, and they'll get a micro-credential, they'll get a certificate from Cornell. So we're trying to focus on seniors that are career-focused, that are looking to, you know, possibly work here locally, and we try to entice them with Cornell and talk about, you know, what it's like in the food processing industry. In that three-day boot camp, they'll get that certificate when they graduate to go along with their diploma, and they can be hired instantaneously by a food processing company. And all these food processing companies are hiring, their average salary is fifty thousand a year with no student debt, and you can walk right into it from high school. So that program, we're going to do it this year, March seventh, eighth, and ninth. It's going to be at the Bosse's campus, but that's going to be for everybody. That's open to all seniors, and we're going to work with all the schools, all the homeschools that want to send their students towards that program. Tech Wars is another cool event. It's March twenty-third through, it's a one-day event. Six hundred and seventy-five students were there last year from sixth grade to twelfth grade. They do a robotics competition, and at that event, what we do is we also show them the mechatronics equipment. Because the mechatronics equipment that we bought for Bosse's is portable, and they can take them to the events. So kids that already had STEM wars, doing the robotics, gaming, and all that good stuff, having fun, then we're there to talk to them about, what can you do with that, right? You're taking STEM, but now you can take it in high school with mechatronics. And we show them those careers, and mechatronics is paying anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars an hour coming out of high school. So it's very important. We did a senior job fair as well. We encouraged all the schools, especially the homeschools, to send seniors over to Bosse's this year. Karen Winters will be setting out that date, and that's for all, again, seniors that are career-focused. We have typically seven to eight companies there recruiting them, and we'll hire them on demand right before they get their graduation. And then lastly, I'm kicking off this new thing called Genesee Fastlane, and it's really to help students that are graduating, help them find careers locally, as I talked about. Then I started peeling the onion back, we heard transportation's an issue. So I partnered with Pellegrino Autos, and they will help finance a car once you get full-time employment. And then housing's an issue as well. Reliant real estate, we'll partner with them to help them find apartments or housing as well. So this Genesee Fastlane is a new program that I'm kind of kicking off to try to help and get kids out there that really want to, you know, jumpstart their career, and sometimes they don't know what's going on, or they only have, you know, a permit, they don't have their driver's license, or they don't have means to a car, and then how do we kind of help them along the way? And that's what that program's designed to do. So that's a little bit about what we do in workforce development in Genesee County. So any questions on that? Sorry, I wanted to kind of quick here for timing, but.
Do you come across anything with, like, all the funding and stuff for, like, the Tech Wars, for the robotics programs that, like, we would have at school and stuff that would kind of funnel down into the district level? Is that something you guys see come through, or?
Yeah, I mean, there's always funding opportunities, and I, we talked to all the schools, and I was talking to a STEM cohort today at Leroy, at the Genesee Valley Corporate Office, and there's opportunities that I have funding through economic development money, as well as some of the programs that I've already kind of sponsored, like Glow With Your Hands as well. So like last year, we sponsored a soapbox derby event through Glow With Your Hands and through economic development money. And we got some funding together, it was about six or seven thousand dollars. We did a soapbox derby, I don't know if you guys have seen that event, that was another one that we started, and it's again, getting kids, seven to thirteen-year-olds to work with their hands for the day, and we did it in a fun way. So just let me know, is the best way to do it. Whatever you're going to do, we'd love the support.
Chris, have you ever been tapped by a school district to help up, help set up, like, a STEM environment, like a classroom, or have you been consulted ever in that area, or?
We got involved with John Kennedy. They did a fourth graders innovator club. So we kind of worked with them on some of their programming that they were doing, but ultimately, part of the deal was, we had Bosse's teachers come help, and it was like Friday, every Friday, they would do a STEM day. And so some of the Bosse's teachers would come over and do some displays of, you know, you know, experiments and stuff like that. And then at the end of the event, we would take all the fourth graders over to Bosse's to see the programs that are offered, like mechatronics and so on, and welding, and a lot of cool programs that they don't even know about, to tie that in a little bit. So yeah, we're going to be happy to help out in that regards.
The hardest struggle we find in that is the sustainability for it. So we've set up a lot of programs at schools, and either the teachers leave that we're doing it, or things get moved around and kind of, so, you know, if there's a commitment and a plan there on sustainability moving forward, that's usually what makes the program successful. I mean, we can set it up and model it and bring in the people who need to come in to help you set it up without an issue. It's just, what's the plan to make it sustainable going forward?
And I think that that's the, you know, from what I've seen from my standpoint, is sometimes the room will get set up, but then it just sits there.
Right.
And have you seen that before yourselves, where a room will get set up and then it just is vacant?
I've seen things in general like that, I mean, just like Mark was saying, it takes energy, right?
It does.
You've got to have a champion.
And someone that's going to man the-
Right, it does. And that's really the biggest-
So usually where we've had success is where the schools have somebody who's already passionate about that, and then we just give them the tools to really take off with it. And they've been successful doing that. The hard part is, a lot of those are the ones who move on, and then the program kind of sits there.
See, Bosse's got, have a library system, right? And I'm sure you guys are aware of that, but they have so many tools there that you don't even really need a lot to set up. You can just borrow that, you know, that equipment, but it's that programming side and that champion is the key.
This is amazing, what you have here, and I think the end goal here is not, you know, not just, you know, getting someone to get into a career, but showing them that there are careers out there that exist, and I think it's so hard. Kids aren't necessarily as motivated or direction in a way that they're seeking that, and I think this is, there's some pretty good ladders here to success that you've got set up.
Yeah, I talked to everybody about, it's all about, career exploration has to happen in K through twelve. It's too costly, right?
Yeah.
When you get out of school, like, how many kids go to college and they don't know what they're doing, they switch majors or they drop out, and yet that student debt keeps going. So you can't, career, you know, you can't explore a career STEM, right? Because it's too costly. Do it in K through twelve, and that's what we always promote. And there's a lot more, you know, than this, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what we've been doing to try to, you know, get kids to find their passion ultimately, right?
Well, thank you for what you've done here.
We can send this over, we can email this electronic version over to John, and then he can distribute this to the board, so everybody can have a bigger electronic version to look at, and-
I don't know if I want to see the salaries.
Are we going to send it to the next meeting and you won't be there?
But thank you.
Yeah, and to get any other questions, anytime, please just sort of reach out to us. So thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Hey, up next, we have Michelle.
All right, so I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what's called therapeutic crisis intervention, also known as TCI. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with it. There's similar programs like Skip, CPI. The one we're going to start implementing with part of our ARPA funds is therapeutic crisis intervention. Implementing this program and getting training program going and things like that kind of triggered this policy we're going over tonight as well in regard to punishments. We wanted to make sure that I gave you an overview of what this TCI encompasses and what it looks like and how we're moving forward with it before you saw a policy on punishment. So therapeutic crisis intervention. End goal, what it will look like in the classroom at the end. It's a trauma-informed, sensitive environment where children and adults feel safe. Staff using and implementing proactive measures to prevent or de-escalate crisis situations with children. Responding in a therapeutic manner, and if necessary, intervening physically in a manner that reduces risk of harm to children and staff. And processing the crisis event with the children in a meaningful way to improve their coping strategies, self-awareness, and self-regulation. So the two key points I want to point out to you guys are the second one and the fourth one. The second one talks about the proactive measures. So a big, big bulk of this program and intervention is the proactive measures. How are we setting up our environment? What language are we using with students? How are we educating our staff and training them in how to work with a student who may have some traumatic background, or a disability, or a misunderstanding of their environment and working with them? The next biggest part is how are we working with the student after the event? So instead of being reactive, implementing a suspension, or detention, or a warning, or anything like that, how are we talking with the student through what happened? Identifying what happened, giving them different language they can use, giving them different modalities to identify their self-awareness and regulation in that moment. I do want to say, it does talk about physically intervening. I will say, at times, it does happen, right? In my experience in being here, in my professional background, I don't see it something that we would have to use. I do know there's moments, things happen, that things can escalate pretty quickly and become unsafe. So what's nice about having this program and having that in our back pocket would be, there's only a number of people that would even be trained on how to do it, and admin would have to approve it, and staff are trained in how to do it. We're not jumping in in crisis situations where people don't know what to do, or where to go, or how to help one another, and someone ends up getting hurt, whether it's the staff or the student. So although that is on here, it is something that is, you know, less likely to happen, and with the training, we would prevent all of that, or prevent that from happening as much as possible. So really, what it looks at, and when we train staff, it focuses primarily on self-awareness. So how are we, as teachers, aware of ourselves? When we come into school that day, are we tired? Are we feeling a little less impatient? Are we able to focus on our students in the right manner and being self-aware of where we're at for that day, so that we know how we can gauge when we're working with our students? Do I need to call for help? Am I okay in this situation? But we're aware of ourself and what we're capable of doing on any given day. The next phase of it would be active listening. So listening to the student in the moment, really making sure that they know that we're invested in what's going on and what they're thinking and how they're feeling. Then we provide staff with those behavior support techniques of, you know, maybe a student needs to leave the room, maybe we need to give them a fidget, maybe we need to lessen demands that day based on their baseline. Provide some emotional first aid, and with just talking them down in that moment. And then again, this goes up here into this little part of the pyramid, because that may be where that physical component comes up. But this LSI is called the Life Space Interview, is that conversation you have with the student post-crisis, and you talk through the event, you talk through what happened, you talk about different strategies they can use when they are feeling in an escalated state. So how we plan on doing it? So all staff are going to be trained. We would like to have our bus staff trained, our custodial staff trained, aides trained, cafeteria staff trained, in addition to all our teachers, aides, assistants, counselors, everyone. So we're going to do it throughout the year, and then primarily over the summer. This past summer, Lynn, Matt, J.C., and our behavior specialist were trained in being trainers. I brought with me, having that training to train in TCI for my previous employment. But we will continue that training over the summer. Things that we will teach our staff and train them on is developing self-awareness, identifying what trauma may be for students, because, let's be honest, everyone has a different perspective and lens on what trauma may be based on what we've been through. So some things may seem really big to some people and really little to others, so educating our staff on that. Understanding student development and the ability to cope with stress. So some of our students, you know, with disabilities even, different backgrounds, home environments, their ability to cope with stress is going to be different than anyone else. And then brain development, too, you know, looking at the age of the child and where their brain is in development and how they can cope with a situation. Identifying a student's baseline, so knowing on a good day, what does the student look like, and knowing when they come in and you're greeting them and you're saying hello, and you notice, you know, they might roll your eyes at you, that you know that that, it might be a little bit elevated from their baseline. So letting other staff know, connecting with that student, and making sure that we're being proactive in that moment. Enhancing relationship-building strategies. So all of our staff are very good at building relationships with our students, but making sure we're enhancing that, giving them other ideas how to do it and continuously do so. And then becoming knowledgeable of what's called the Stress Model of Crisis, which is part of the training and what the diff- is part of the training and what the different phases of the crisis stage look like. And then the last phase would be, or one of the other topics would be encouraging self-regulation and coping strategies within instruction. So how are we embedding that from the moment they walk in to the moment they leave through the LA class, through content literacy, and embedding that throughout the entire day? That is a very brief and quick overview of therapeutic crisis intervention. It's really a well-developed program. The entire training for anyone is five days. So I tried to make it as succinct as possible for you guys, just so you know where it is, know what it's all about. The biggest thing I want to emphasize is a very, very, very proactive intervention and what are we doing before so that we are preventing from getting to any of that phases of crisis at all.
And I just want to mention to the board, I mean, you may have some questions for Michelle, that later on, your first reading of policy 7350 is something that we have revised, I've talked to the attorneys on, because we are going to be a TCI, you know, the trained district and we do have employees that are trained in that. If, like Michelle said, there becomes a situation where obviously something physical needs to happen to de-escalate a situation, we want to be covered through a policy. Obviously, we don't condone or do anything as far as corporal punishment, but along those lines, you know, it is now 2022, our old policy was 2006, and we need to update that. So that's what the first reading is all about. So I figured Michelle could give you some background on the TCI process and give you a heads up on that.
I myself think that this is a really smart direction that you're pushing going in. I think there's some school districts that are awful light with staff that are TCI-trained and when a crisis occurs, you become limited in your options of what you can do, maybe physically or maybe process-wise. And with this in place, you'll have the ability to both. You'll know what the process is that you'll have to take and then physically, what are the steps that you can do or not do moving forward? So I think administration doing it first and really understanding what this is and then disseminating through, and then the initial training is going to be tough, right? That's going to be extensive, but then it's the recertification process is not so long if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's a little bit shorter.
It should be a little bit shorter. So I thank you for bringing this and then administration picking this up, because I think, you know, we have a slightly adjusted population here this year, and I think it might be beneficial for that new population in our district.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. It's a really, I mean, I enjoy using it. I've seen great results from it and decrease in suspension rates and things like that. So I think it's definitely the way to go and I think, you know, just educating our staff on it, you know, the busyness of our day, sometimes we tend to get reactive just because, you know, our focus goes to other things, but, you know, having all of this background and training will just encourage staff to be more proactive, more so than they are.
Well, the idea to leave it at the door, it just doesn't work anymore for us or students.
Right.
It's going to come in. Maybe we'll bring it in ourselves, but our kids are definitely going to bring it in. We have to meet them where they're at when they come in. And this is a great approach to do so.
This is great. I love everything about this. The thing I especially love about TCI, it's like therapeutic meets Eckers, right? So it's all about that proactive approach to controlling the environment. And I think that we oftentimes get so caught up in trying to control the people in the environment that we forget that, you know, stimulation sounds the way we present ourselves. All of those things are proactive things, but also the key piece is understanding both the age appropriateness and the developmentally appropriateness. And what works in a K room is going to be very different than what works in a fourth grade room because their brain is developed, you know, differently at that age. So I think that this is great and I think that anybody who works in a school district has seen the results of COVID and a lot of those social, emotional foundational skills that kids used to come to school with, they're lacking. And they're lacking ability to cope with big emotions and that's why this is needed more than anything right now.
Little problems that resolve big emotions.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at there. You're saying, well, it's the size of a problem for one person is different from the other and that's...
Yeah, being able to breathe through it once upon a time is not...
That's not the response right now.
No. That's great. This is great.
Thank you.
And I know J.C. and I, we were there the other day, we were talking to a student and we went through the training together this summer. It was pretty intense training and I had said something to the kid, I noticed when you're angry, you swear. And we left the room with J.C. and he said, "TCI training."
Yes.
It's good stuff. Basic type of building relationships and we're finding that there's just good practice in general. There's more to take down than...
Yeah.
Skip gave it a bad name.
I, we sent some students to Genesee County Youth Lead and I had every intent, when they came back, picking the brain and talking them all about it. And I thought at the time it would be a wonderful thing to bring before the board, just to showcase some of the things we're doing. I do hear a lot from people, Matt, you're doing great things with some of our needy kids, the student support is helping. What about the kids that are up here that are aspiring to do other things, that promote leadership? And I, and this is a great example of that. So last week when we sent them, I wanted to bring them, it's a little short notice, they're all going in different directions and none of the kids could be here tonight. So we filmed a little question and answer session. We didn't want to take the major flaws or the cameraman, that's me. Rob has given me some tips, I'll be better next time. I shouldn't be holding the camera different. And also the volume is a little tough, so I'll play this and then I'll field some questions, but it's a really, really cool opportunity that we have for five of our kids, so I'll let the video play first. Genesee County Youth Lead.
Okay, I am here with five of OA's finest students. I'll have them introduce themselves in just a minute. We're here to talk to the board about Genesee Youth Lead. These students, because they are very busy and have lots of things on their agendas, could not be at the board meeting tonight, but we really wanted to share some of our experiences that we're had and will have for the rest of the school year as part of this program called Genesee Youth Lead. So I'll start by having the candidates introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Carol Williams, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Lea Groff, and I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Lisa Royce, I'm a freshman.
I'm Bela Williams, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jessica Snobski, and I'm a sophomore.
Okay, so how did you guys hear about Genesee Youth Lead?
It was sent out by the school, an email.
And as part of that email, tell me a little bit about the process, how you guys came to be selected. So you responded to the call to be a member and then what happened after that?
You had to send an application letter and then you got interviewed and then you selected.
And a little bit about the interview process. What were some of the things they asked you?
Like, what did you do for community service and things like you did before you joined and applied to this group?
Okay, and then they interviewed you and how many were selected?
Thirteen, fifteen.
So thirteen. We don't know the exact number of applicants, but we know that some people were denied, so we can assume there were probably dozens and dozens of applicants that were unsuccessful. You five were picked. What made you want to participate in Genesee County Youth Lead?
It's a community service as well as just experience with the area.
Area skills.
Okay, so these are skills you're hoping to hone for later on in life?
Yeah.
And I would imagine it probably would look at a college application or resume, so you're building yourselves a resume that makes you more marketable when you go off to better schools and more competitive schools. You've had your first, how many times have you met this year?
Once a month. Yeah, once a month, I think, so an average.
So once a month, and tell me about your first meeting.
Um, we're done team building activities and what your personality was.
How do they measure your personality? That sounds interesting. Okay, so then they grouped you by people that were similar to you or different?
Different.
No similarities.
Similarities?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so you mostly team building stuff. What do you envision yourselves doing as part of this group down the road at some of the other future meetings?
Going to different businesses and taking notes and learning about what they do and what makes their business good or what extra non-cosplay their business and how we can, like, come up with ideas to maybe fix that.
Nice, nice. So you're interviewing other business leaders about what made them successful? Anything you have to do with that information? Do you present it to the group? Do you present it here at school?
We do presentations in the group at Bosie's once we get all the notes.
Awesome, awesome. When you think about leadership, this is an off-the-cuff question, what does leadership mean to you in particular? What is leadership?
Like taking initiative and just like wanting to be like a team player and always like asking like people like how to, I guess, like, I don't know, just being a leader, I guess.
Anyone else have thoughts on leadership?
Using everyone's ideas to come together is one.
And after your first meeting, what are your thoughts on Genesee Youth Lead? Good impression, good experience?
Yeah, I think it's real nice.
Awesome. I may ask you to come back and present to the board after you've been through this four, five, six months and see, or maybe even at the end to see what you got out of it, but we're excited to present this to the board and I think we have some of OA's finest here, so you may be hearing from this group again, but I want to thank all of you for coming down and taking the time. Wish you could have been here live in person tonight, but we know you're busy, so thanks again for your time.
So obviously you can glean out of that the session. Great kids.
The things that they'll talk about, they're going to talk about tourism, business, agriculture, and health and human services, government, and the list is long here and they're going to focus on one or a different one every month. And I'm just excited that they've had the opportunity. I've done a little bit of homework on it over the last, goes back to 2012. I think we've had nine students participate prior to this year, so we have five this year that were picked. It tells you about the quality of the candidates that they picked, so we'll bring them back, maybe hopefully late in the spring and let them present here in person.
So Matt, is that a thirteen that are doing this? Five of them are OA?
Yes. And it was one of the things that, I mean, someone had forwarded something to me in the summer and I promoted it to the parents, I think I sent it out on Parents Square, and then after that, they took it and ran. I didn't know how many would apply or interview, they was all on their own. So when the first visit came along, you know, Lux and I were talking about transportation and, you know, that's this week. And I didn't even know how many were selected until I had a chance to meet with them. So five out of thirteen, that says a lot about them.
And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, there was, there was a fee for this that obviously the district picked up. And I want to say it's like Leadership Genesee that I went to a couple of years ago. It's for, it's for our students and if they applied and were accepted, the district picked up their, their fee for that because we think it's so important, so.
We did, and it was seventy-five dollars per student.
It's not bad at all. It's a lot cheaper than Leadership Genesee. That's for sure. That's great.
Thanks.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Under approval of that, if resolved in the minutes of the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two regulations be approved, make a motion. So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Carol, you, visitor request tonight? None, okay. To the approval of warrants, be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims auditor reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, John, you alluded to these policies a little bit earlier.
Yeah, so you have two policies in front of you for the first...
Over a second.
We don't have any on there. We will next month.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. So two policies are in front of you that need updating. Policy seventy-three fifty, and again, these are both first readings, is extending the corporal punishment policy that we had. The original is there, you can see the additions, which also includes emergency interventions and also the process that if any time something to that extreme is used, what the district will do as far as documentation and contacting parents and, you know, making sure that we, you know, have full information on any situation that results in that. So certainly you can review that. I don't know if there's any questions. And then fifty-six sixty is just updating our policy. Obviously, over the last few years, last couple of years with COVID, we did not have to charge families for meals. We are back to charging families for meals and this policy is just updated on how we notify families if they have, you know, debt or need to pay, lunch shaming, you know, all of that, nothing earth-shattering there. It's all pretty, pretty basic, but just ways how parents can, you know, pay for their accounts and how the district will respond to, you know, charges and things like that. But bottom line is each and every day, we're going to, we're going to feed our kids, so.
How are the signups going for the free and reduced? Is it back to where it was pretty COVID, a similar number?
It's, it's low. Mary said it's, yeah, we're still low on numbers. I think everyone is, and I can't remember, it's got to be coming up soon, the date that it gets turned off, so their carry-forward eligibility from the spring of 2020 is still carries forward until the first twenty, thirty business days of the school year. So we got to be coming up on that pretty soon where they get turned off. So any of the ones that would have qualified before that haven't turned in an application, I think once they start getting charged, we'll start seeing some more of those applications come in. We are looking at implementing an electronic version of the application form. It's not a lot of money. Yeah, it's just, you know, getting it rolling and getting it implemented, so probably for future years, but.
I think we did get, it was sent to us in the calendar, right?
It's in the calendar and I think it's sent via Parents Square and it's on the website.
Will there be any more mailing going out?
We also made it out for new registering, like, at least in these days.
So multiple opportunities. I think you're probably right, right? When you get, when people start to get charged, it might say, hey, wait a second?
Right.
So I don't know if there's any question on the policies. Again, this is your first reading, so you still have, you know, a month or so to review them.
I'll give you just one more, like a second, I'll give you just one more.
The only recommendation I would make on seventy-three fifty, unless something is glaring, it may just help us because obviously the old policy is still in effect until a new one is approved. Again, not, not that I'm concerned that we would ever go to a situation where, again, we're at the top of the pyramid and things get really out of control, but I would be concerned that we would not have a policy in place for a situation if that were to occur. But it's certainly up to the board.
Thoughts? What do you guys think?
Can we move forward with the fifty-six sixty and do a second reading on seventy-three fifty next month?
Yeah, the fifty-six sixty is pretty straightforward, right?
It says that they get a meal of their choice, right? I remember back in the day, you used to get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich if you forgot your lunch, but it clearly does say in here that they can get a breakfast or a lunch of their choice. And then staff, cafeteria staff will be trained and I know this is talking a lot about like meal shaming and, you know, appropriate language to use if a child forgets their lunch money. It's not, oh, you forgot your money again, things like that.
Yeah, we kind of got rid of the notes that you owe this much money as part of the shaming policy because that was really noticeable. Anytime a kid had a note coming from the line, we had to do what that meant. So that's not really even addressed anymore. Sometimes it's just a gentle nudge, oh, hey, remind mom and dad to put some money in your account or maybe send some extra money in for snacks tomorrow. So my faculty and staff that I've witnessed have been very good about that. There's no pulling away trades to say you have no money, you have to take this lunch, you know, all that's not existed in this district.
Great. Fantastic.
So I make a motion to approve policy fifty-six sixty. Can I get a motion?
Yep, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and then we're going to do the seventy-three fifty next month. Christine, what are you thinking?
Well, I wanted to give you an update tonight because on the agenda, there is the, a couple of agenda items under new business for the year-end financial equity transfer.
Yes.
And I do have a little presentation that kind of goes along with it.
Thank you.
You all have a copy of the federal stimulus grant funding update, but as far as, I got the audit entries from the auditors last Wednesday. It's kind of finding that's not unusual.
Thank you.
With a lot of, I'm hearing from a lot of districts that their, their audit entries were a little bit later this year, I think. Staffing has been an issue for them as well, so, so they were a little bit late, but we got our, got them in time, got our SD three filed on time, and we were able to get those numbers crunched. We did end up with the ability to put a million dollars into the, the capital project fund. Our surplus with that is driven mostly, a lot of it's driven by the fact that we were able to move about six hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of what normally would have been paid out of general fund into the stimulus grants. So that was very helpful. You know, revenue-wise, we came in on, pretty much on target, ninety-seven percent of what we, what we budgeted for is we got. On the expense side, without moving the stimulus, those expenses over there, we were about ninety-four percent accurate, and then the, as far, once you moved all that, we were about ninety-one percent. But it was helpful, and we knew that kind of going in with, with the federal stimulus money. So I wanted to kind of, kind of lead into that to talk to you about like where we're at on that. We knew we had, what is it, three point four million that we got in grants, so overall, we had three point four million allocated to us, broken down into nine different buckets. You know, we've talked, some of this that we've talked about before, special aid fund revenue, it's not general fund revenue, but how you, you know, how we were able to help the general, general fund is to use some, some of the expenses that were allowable expenses under the terms of the grants for learning loss, like reading, math specialist, things like that, we can pay out of, move that over into the, the grants. Short-term funding, so it's addressing, you know, short-term needs, not long-term needs, and there was a lot of rules governing it. Again, we looked long and hard at some of the salaries and, and when we were filling out these applications and to determine what we, you know, what we could use it for. So all the, all of the applications are submitted and approved. Just a reminder of the acronyms.
Thank you.
Acronyms, 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 and there's more. But, so those are just the acronyms. This is the spreadsheet, and I wanted to make sure you guys had a hard copy of it too because it's a lot to digest on the screen, but those were the buckets that we had and the years, the timeframe that it can be spent in, what the allocation by bucket is, what the status of it is, they're all approved now, what we spent in twenty-one, twenty-two out of those, what, and what the plan is at this point for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three, twenty-four. There's a little bit goes into twenty-four, twenty-five for the ARPS summer learning because we can do that in the summer twenty-twenty-four. That ends September thirtieth, that bucket. So we're able to get four summers out of the summer learning loss because we started right away that first summer.
So will any of those years, will we replace general fund spending again?
Yes.
Grant money?
Yes, and I don't know if I have that with me. The first year was six-ten.
So you, this way you say first year, you mean the year that we're in?
So this twenty-one, twenty-two was, we had about six-ten. We'll have, we won't have that. We'll have about three, we'll, we'll probably be about five hundred the second year.
And so we can expect that that will probably create surplus then? We, we budgeted for it, but we'll receive revenue that will offset. We'd expect to hopefully.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll keep that in the back of our mind as we're going through the budgeting process, obviously. Also, you know, we talked about, you know, I'm going to have next month for you, when I give you the financials. Remember last year I did the reserve fund plan? I'm going to try and get that to you sometime between now and then so you have time to look at it, but that'll be up in front against you as well, so that you can see where we're at with our reserves and thinking about, you know, what are our long-term needs. So we, you know, we were able to bring into the district one point one million last year, up all of this. Next year, the plan is about one point four, but you do see it drop off. They're going into twenty-three, twenty-four. And when I say next year, I mean this fiscal year that we're in right now. Another bucket that was very helpful to us this year, I know, I showed you this probably once, but I'll give you a little bit of an update on it, was that emergency connectivity funding, funding. That was through, through the U SAC and E-Rate program that provided four hundred dollars per Chromebook or device for students and staff. So we were able to leverage that funding. There is another round that, that never got off the ground, around four, I should say, but we, we were able to purchase, bring in about hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for that. So for, I gave an example at the bottom. So for one Chromebook, if it's a nine, if it's nine hundred dollars and we got five hundred, four hundred dollars in this emergency connectivity funding to pay for it, you'd have about five hundred dollars left. That's purchased, they were all purchased through Bosie's, so we get eight on that five hundred thousand dollars. So net-net, we end up about eighty-five dollars per unit is what it ends up costing the district. So overall, it's what, nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars for all of the, all of them that we receive, if we get them all. There's two hundred and twenty that are in back order, and Rob might have an update.
As of today, they said they have a lot in inventory, so they're going to place that order for us. So maybe by December, January yourself, we'll see that batch of two-twenty. And then the round four that's pending right now, if it gets approved, it'll be around eighty-five units. So it's a small batch, but if it gets approved, because at this point, they said, don't plan on it, because round one and two were planned, but around three and four are really, you know, fingers crossed that that actually happens, and there's money left.
And kudos to Rob and kudos to Bosie's for really advocating for that, for the districts and jumping on top of that, getting those applications processed and getting that funding in. So.
So Christine, that did around to, but every single one of these funds, you had to, you had to apply, you had to, that this is.
Are you talking the, the one before?
So it's a, our, our summer, these, this is.
They added to our grants. We went from about last year, six grants to sixteen grants.
Now.
So.
It al, it almost gets to the point, and I, and I know talking to other superintendents, you just shake your head like, I'm done with this. Like, it is, it is, and, and kudos to Christine, and because we just shake our heads at some of the information that they're asking for, looking for, the jumping through the hoops, and, and I, and I get that on their end, but it almost gets to a point where you just, you just want to throw up your hands and say, you know, I'm done. Certainly, you know, we're not going to do that, but it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a lot of time-consuming work.
We don't have grant writers that we're working with here in our district, right?
No, you just have a bunch of amazing administrators.
That's why Christine had to ask.
They take us.
Yes, yes.
We are the grant writers.
Yes, which is incredible because not every district, but a lot of districts do contract out.
Or just don't apply.
Or don't apply.
Which is such a disservice, but.
That's, that's what it is, where they're leaving money on a day, they just don't apply.
Six-ten, yeah.
I, I, I would be curious to see, and then I'm not asking anybody to look through this information, but I would be very curious if this is typical, the number of grants here for all school districts, and I would say probably not.
I think, no, I, I don't think all of them qualify for some of the buckets that, that we had too, but, you know, I think for us, it's such a team effort. Like, you have to have your financial piece, you have to have your instructional side of, side of the application, you have to have vision, and, you know, it, it really, it took all of us in a, in a room of many times, a lot of hours, and a lot of time invested in it. But, you know, my, my goal is that we fully expend this and fully bring this back in. Another thing that's also, that's not listed on here, that's impacting our, will impact our budget this year, our UPK grant went up significantly. We had a hundred and eleven thousand before, we're at three hundred and forty-four now. So that increment, that hundred and eleven didn't fully fund UPK in the past, so that's now going to be another opportunity for us in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to be able to, and go, and that one's going forward as long as they continue that type of funding, and it looks like that's the plan. That's two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars more that we're able to bring out of the general fund. We're actually able to buy supplies.
Yes.
And, and additional things to enhance our, our UPK program with it. It not only covered this, just the salaries, it finally is covering the salaries and the benefits that go along with it. Now it's also allowing Lynn to be able to buy things for the program, which is great.
Did you have half-day spots converted to full for expansion, or were you already full?
We've already done.
So that's for eighteen full-day spots.
Two classes full, eighteen.
That's a good number. Thanks.
This is great, Christine. I mean, it doesn't stop. I mean, thank you for everybody. It were, you have it on paper and you can see the numbers that you're receiving, but there's a tremendous amount of accountability going on behind it now as you continue through it, the expending and that you're spending it as it is written in, in the follow-up with these different outlets.
Yes, so there's, there's a whole program.
Yeah, exactly, and another thing to caution too is, you know, the monies are going out of the general fund, purchase this stuff now, but as these run out in the three years, you know, it has to then be brought back into the general fund.
Right, and we need to plan for that.
Right, so I just.
So that's, so that the, one of the reasons, you know, that when you see the surplus now being what it is, it's allowing us to utilize that to help build up the reserves that we need to build back up. You want to use it for things like that, that you know, you know, it's not going to be something that you can sustain beyond this time. So if it's, you know, one-time expenditures, fund or reserve, do the one-time expenses. You know, I think we're seeing good things with the after-school program and the summer programs. Not all districts did what we did, and, you know, a lot of work went into it, but I think it's all good. But anyways, I wanted to give you that update, kind of like a, let you know, this is kind of why our surplus is, is what it is, but it's actually a really good thing, and I'm, I'm really kind of hoping we can earmark, you know, what we're doing in the next couple of years with this towards, you know, helping to refund that, that capital reserve, because we do have, you know, we having, our facility committee has been having conversations and about where we're going to be, and, and, you know, we're preparing to present to you guys our consolidated thoughts on what we think is going forward. So that's my report.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's really nice.
You're welcome.
John, that's you.
Just, just a few announcements. I know girls' soccer, soccer sectionals start actually tonight. They're in Williamson, hopefully, well, it's only three minutes in, so hopefully, hopefully we come back with a victory, so we wish them luck in, luck this week. Many eighth and ninth graders are traveling to Washington DC this Thursday and Friday, just to give the boards a heads up, and as always, thank you to Bernie Bookmiller for organizing such a trip for our students annually. It's a great trip, and so I want to say there's fifty, sixty kids going because it's both eighth and ninth. We're still trying to catch up from the COVID years, so I think next year, we'll be just back to the eighth graders, but we never, we didn't want to skip a class, so both eighth and ninth graders are going, and we have a lot of chaperones, and it'll, it'll be great. Hopefully, the weather is better than what it is outside right now. Our next facilities meeting that Christine mentioned is this Thursday night at six PM. I just want to let the board know that we are at the stage of finalizing plans for what our next capital project is, to present our recommendations to the board. I won't, I won't jump ahead, but there's, you know, a few options that the committee will take a look at as far as, you know, the work that can be done, and then just possibly other options that we may recommend to the board for a community vote, maybe late spring or even early fall, late spring this school year, early fall next year. But we will, we will wrap everything up in a nice package and be able to give that to the board for, you know, your review and, and hopefully approval or, or suggestions and feedback. Many of our seventh and eighth graders were involved in the Rachel's Challenge Chain Reaction Workshop today. I was in and out and spent the last part of the two hours in there, and I just want to thank you to all the teachers and staff members who dedicated their day to be there with our students. It's a great workshop. I've been a part of that for the last, you know, fifteen years, and I know it's tough for teachers and staff to say, all right, you know, I'll, I'll leave my classroom, leave my phone there, and spend all day with, with kids, and I know it's hard just even being out of the classroom, but we have some really dedicated teachers and staff and adults that were a part of it, and it's, it's just a great, a great workshop. So those kids that were involved, maybe they came home today, mom and dad, and seemed to be a little upset or just moved, and that, that was our goal. And if parents have any questions, give me a call. I'll let you know what it's all about, but it was a great day. Our IT systems support interviews are scheduled for next week, Thursday. I didn't know if any board members wanted to serve. This is to replace Rich Anderson, who's retiring at the end of, of December. So we have four applications right now, all seem pretty highly qualified. So we are going to interview next Thursday, and if a board member is interested, we're looking at a timeframe for about eight to two, eight to three. So if you're available, you know, just send me an email and we'll put you on there, but we're going to have administration on there, obviously with Rob. Rich will be there because obviously he knows the ins and outs of the job, and we'll ask some teachers to be a part of it too, so hopefully we get a, a good, successful candidate. The plan is to have somebody appointed and be able to work with Rich as a little transition period for, you know, I'd say probably, you know, three weeks, maybe even a month, because there's just a lot of, a lot of behind-the-scenes networking, and with everything being so new around here, you know, we wanted to make it an easy transition, so we'll see how that goes. Capital project update, obviously I didn't have AJ here. Not much has changed. I mentioned to the board that the moisture content of the concrete out front really isn't getting any better, and I will tell you that basically, I'll just say it, we've had. So what we are going to do is we are going to make available that front entrance. They are going to drop the ceiling, they're going to put in the light fixtures, they're going to put in the doors and, and everything, and basically do everything but the, the flooring and, and the trimming around it. And we will open that up hopefully November first, because we have concerts, we have winter, you know, we got basketball games, and so what they're going to do is make sure that the concrete itself is pretty flat, it's pretty safe, but just there's the edges that there might be a little bit of a step up or, or whatever. They're going to lay down some, you know, groundwork to make it safe. We'll have it reviewed, but we need that functional. We can't be walking around like we are, and so the installation for the terrazzo could be somewhere over Christmas break. They, they mentioned something about next summer. I just, I, I don't know, but I know that we're frustrated. I'm sure you as, as a board are frustrated, but there's really just nothing that we can do. So we're putting our heads together, but in any event, we are going to open that up, so at least we have access to that. Again, it won't be finished, but, you know, it's been enough time, and we'll keep measuring it weekly.
And they don't want to cover it or anything without inhibit its drum.
Yeah, exactly. We talked about, you know, I joked about, you know, just putting in a.
Sheet rug.
Sheet rug.
All that stuff, and they don't want to cover it, you know. Yeah, so, but again, we'll
make sure that it's safe by, you know, making sure that the edges are, are covered and there's some, you know, if there's, needs to be, you know, some sort of, you know, trim or, you know.
Just transition.
Inclined, yeah, transitioned worst, things like that, but.
It is frustrating.
Yeah.
Does everything get worse?
What's that?
Does it get worse?
Yes.
Couple spots.
Yeah. So, but they've decided that they can do the drop ceiling, they can get everything else in there, the doors, all of that, and then once they do put in the terrazzo, they will, they will cover everything up so there's no damage, and, you know, it doesn't get dusty, things like that, they'll, you know, but, you know, we got to get, got to get moving on this, so. And some of the outside work, they were kind of waiting for this flooring to be done, and we said, no, you got, you got to finish, you know, you got to finish. Do what you can now. So that, that's the plan. So over the next few weeks, I'm sure there'll be lots of movement going on in here. They are working second shift, so.
Is that it then, John, or what else is there left then for them to complete?
So we, we are remitting the, the flooring down at the elementary cafeteria. We're looking at putting in different terrazzo, at least at the front entrance. We're working with them to kind of fix that. The flooring itself. The flooring itself, you know, it is, it is what it is. And we're just trying to ease up the contrast between the old and the new, so we've come up with different designs to, to make it, you know. It was funny, you had grandparents' day and people love the cafeteria and they love the flooring. And not once did I have someone say, gee whiz, I can see, you know, but obviously we notice it. So we're just going to try to, you know, make a design that makes it a little less obvious of, of the new flooring. And other than that, it's punch list items. There's stuff still in the main office. There's some cabinetry that needs to go behind Heather we're waiting on. It's just a supply issue. But other than that, it's just punch list, walking through and...
Windows are done and all?
No, the science rooms, so a, a crepe came in and when they delivered it, all the windows were broken. So they ended up reordering them and said that the manufacturer said, well, we have to remake these windows because they're custom and we'll do that the first week of November and ship them out. So, you know, but they do have, you know, temporary ones in there and again, it's just, it's just the waiting, waiting game.
Is there still a piece of plywood down there? Or has that been removed?
I think that's been removed.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's been removed, just because of the weather.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, they've had temporary windows, so it actually looks like there's no windows at all, because these windows are so dark. I walk by rooms and I'm like, do you have your window open?
Is anyone in there? I love that.
Yeah, so we're just, we're just waiting on that, you know? Yeah, it's, so...
Now, this concrete out here, they're going to make sure it's not slick, because there's certain finishing on con, finishings on concrete that when you hit it with snow...
Well, they had scrubbed it. They had scrubbed it a couple of weeks ago to try to get it. So actually Matt and I were in there last night and we were walking on it fine. I was worried about it kind of being lumpy. It, it's very, it's very smooth. It's not slick. I just worry about, you know, there's a little...
Yeah.
You know, ledge up to the old terrazzo and like I said, they have guaranteed that they will go around and smooth everything out to make sure that there's no, you know, walking hazards and things like that.
Right, and, and maybe if they could even just do like a test with, like getting it wet to make sure, because when the kids start coming in with the snow, like I said, certain finishings on concrete, it just gets very slick. And if they're not, that's just it, if they're not sealing it, because they're afraid that will, you know, the moisture content, then just want to make sure that we're prepared for...
We had even talked about just even creating a little hallway, maybe not making the whole area, but just maybe a, a three or four foot hallway right in front of the auditorium that you just have access to where if someone comes through the front, they don't have to go through the main office. Because my big issue was if we have a home basketball game here on a Friday night, a lot of people will come in the back, but we also have a lot of people coming in here for, for concerts. I do not want them walking through the main office, you know, that's all carpeted, that's, you know, they need to be out here, so that's, that's the reason for that.
Yeah, the day though, they're going to be bringing in more water every time they come in.
That's just a...
It's like, I just, for the life of me, like I started jerking around the internet a couple of nights ago to see if there's a remedy for it. But like, it's can't be the only time in the history of terrazzo that this has ever happened and there's got to be an expert out there.
And, and remember that they laid a lot more concrete than what they had expected, because when they ran into the, you know, unleveled entrance way, you know, they laid, I'd probably say they laid probably twice as much concrete as they thought they needed to. And there's, there's a lot of concrete out there.
Yeah, but you would think there's then a formula then. If you lay X amount of concrete, there's, it's going to retain X amount of moisture in these, in these conditions. And then is there a way to remedy that? Like I just feel like there's got to be, I don't know. I don't know much about terrazzo. It's just super frustrating.
I think if there was a different flooring other than terrazzo, I think it would have been completely...
Oh, sure.
Because it's terrazzo and, you know, weren't, and again, I'm not, I'm not a flooring expert.
Maybe, could we get runners maybe, like for events and things like that, just so that...
Yeah.
We're at least knocking some of the water off over there and not tracking it through the halls.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Our poor custodians do so much.
They've, they've heard Christine and I loud and clear, so.
Okay.
They, they'll, yeah, so. And then lastly, I provided the board, you know, some, some shirts that I gave to you early. That was supposed to be my gift to you today in this month. Obviously it's Board Appreciation Month. It should be Board Appreciation Year, because your work is year-round. I just personally want to thank all of you for your support, your dedication, your time. Being a past board member myself, I know it's not an easy job. It's thankless and certainly it's not, and never compensated. But I just want to thank you for your continued support. I think we work very well as a team. I think the seven of you work very well as a team. You always have the students' interests and they're always at the forefront of every decision that we make and I just want to thank you for who you are as a board. And hopefully, you know, as, as the, the months and, and the years go on, we continue this partnership. But I just want to thank you for everything that you do for this, for this district. You know, it's, it's behind the scenes, but you're the ones that make the decisions for what we do here and we've been very successful. So I just want to say thank you and, like I said, I'd have those T-shirts for you, but I figured you'd want them really, because they were title tale. But, but, but thank you and we certainly do appreciate your efforts, absolutely.
Thanks, John.
That's all I have.
Okay, Max, the elementary principal, Ms. Taylor.
So I got a little nervous with that report. That sounds a lot more formal than what I'm used to.
That's all we're expecting.
So we're really excited about revamping our before and after-school services. I couldn't stop using the word tutoring, because it sounds like we're only focusing on our struggling students. So we have created programs and I kind of went back to the days of synergize on six and challenged my teachers to think of something that they're passionate about, that they want to instill in children and how can we spiral that up from the kids that need the academic support to the kids that need the academic enrichment? And they've really met that challenge. So some ideas that we are going to be presenting to our third, fourth and fifth grade students are Hornets in Harmony. Mrs. Hudson is going to be doing almost like a jazz band and challenging kiddos that are ready. She's going to be inviting some sixth grade students down to participate in that as well. They're talking about doing a newspaper, graphic novels, tybeau, a breakfast club, mystery math. So just all kinds of things, storytelling. And we're going to just have kids, third, fourth and fifth, come together with different teachers. I've got kindergarten teachers, working with grade teachers, and the faculty are, they're just really excited right now. So we're really hoping that our kids are going to be just as excited. And it's going to be a push to really meet the needs of all of our learners. Because I think when you start talking about tutoring and after-school programs, as much as you don't mean to, your lens kind of goes narrow and you focus on those struggling kids and then you start talking about test scores. And we really need to be able to talk about all of our kids and having them all supported and drawn in and finding the passions, you know, was kind of a perfect offshoot of some of the presentations we've seen today, so really excited.
Thank you.
So I was able to share out with teachers yesterday a new way of calculating IEP writing days, which I think is going to work very well for teachers. It's consistent, K through twelve, so kindergarten teachers at the same amount of time as twelfth grade teachers per student, I'm working on IEPs. I was also able to share out annual review and reevaluation schedule for the year, starting in December, ending in May, so that teachers are able to plan ahead of time for their meetings and setting up meetings, so that all of one teacher's meetings are in one day. So all of an out of meetings are on Thursday, the next Tuesday is all of DeMarzo meetings and things like that. It just helps from a planning standpoint and then also for subs and teachers coming in and out of meetings and that transition time in between and then going late on meetings and things like that. So I'm looking forward to what that will look like this year.
Pause for a second, please. Calculation, so it's a lot of the amount of time for IEP writing per student?
Yes.
So how, how do you, how, what, is there a formula that you, like, how do you, like, so a student can try to figure out?
So I kind of went off, I went off of what past practice was and what they've done in the past and then worked with both the department chairs, Robin and Adrian, on what would work best for each teacher or what they've done in the past and what they would be happy to see. So each teacher gets two and a half hours a student to write their...
Per student, not, not just like a blanket day?
Nope, no, so some, some of our self-contained teachers have twelve bits, or some of our other case loads are five. So, you know, to do twelve in one day and then you have other teachers who have five, it makes more sense to give it per student. And then they're able to take that time, you know, based on schedules of Matt and Lynn.
And then how do they use, so that, like, how do they use it? So is it like, they can say that I'm going to use two point five hours today for a student as, when it comes to the time they're writing?
We ask that they try and do it, because they're, all their meetings are in one day. We're asking them to do it in one-day increments as much as they can, just for some purposes and planning purposes for the buildings. It would get tricky to do it two and a half hours at a time. So we're trying to get them to use it in full-day increments as much as possible.
I, I like it and I like that all the meetings are on the same day for a teacher. Like I've got thirteen, thirteen teams this year and I know they're going to be on thirteen different days and it drives me insane. Because you start to mix it up, no matter how focused and organized you are or that, you know, you know what I mean?
And once you get an IEP writing mode, you're in that mode.
You're in the mode, right?
You can't go one and out of this very slowly.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. How do you think you're next?
Yeah, um, math and lit team are up and running again. The board recalls from last year, we expanded both math and lit team from pre-K five, they are now pre-K eight. So math team this year is focusing, it's Kristen Leicher again. She's been our teacher leader of math team for quite a number of years. They're doing a book study. It's called Building Thinking Classrooms in the Mathematics Classroom, K-12. Matt and I, so she kicked it off, Pete Green from Bosse's Kane, kind of helped her facilitate the kickoff of this book study. And what this book entails is fourteen different teaching practices that they say enhance mathematical learning. So they experimented with it during math team. Actually, John and I were in a little bit when they were playing around with the numbers and then Kristen invited Matt, Matt and I in to watch her try in her own classroom. And it was really, it was a really, really cool experience, so that whole math team is really jazzed up. If you recall with math team, although we have one-six, one-seven, one-eight at our elementary level, we have a rep from pre-K, we have a rep from kindergarten and those teachers take it back to their teams to share that knowledge. So they're really jazzed up about that, going phenomenally. Our lit team had a little bit of shift in leadership. Elena Fisher is on leave right now with her baby, so she stepped down for this year. Chris Assanti has taken over the literacy team chair position and is continuing with that vision of moving literacy forward. Really, we have focused a lot on our foundational reading skills. We've kind of moving now on to how do we spread this literacy across the disciplines. They are looking at something called Writing Revolution. It's not really a curriculum per se, but it's an idea of how to promote writing across all disciplines. So whether it's second, third, and fourth grade, whether it's algebra, whether it's US history. So they're going to explore that and really going for that vertical alignment and kind of, kind of coming up with, okay, kindergarten, this is what we're going to focus on with kids in first grade and kind of scaffold it up. It'll take a while. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but the teams are really excited about it and we're really excited about it too, especially with these two teacher leaders that we have in these positions. They just kind of run the ideas by Matt, Lynn and I and they take them and they go and do, that's great. That enthusiasm, I really appreciate it from our teachers.
I structure mine as good as John has, some of my thunder with some of his. So there's some overlap in the things I'll highlight here, including the DC trip. You'll see the goodies over in the corner. They need brighten early tomorrow. Rachel's Challenge today, a special thanks to JC. He really takes the lead in that, organizing it and he's in the gym all day with the kids, so he does a great job. And our kids, just, they leave, everyone who leaves that gym says the same thing. What an experience, you know, to have a chance to think about things from another point of view, the adults and the kids. It was a great day. Our Hall of Fame weekend, last weekend, was a tremendous success and a special thanks to Dawn Fisher. Her Friday luncheon with the candidates was just over the top, great. She planned a farm-to-table meal, reached out to local farms all on her own, provided a great lunch. I had a fancy menu, it was, and tied there was her foods classes. So I had the, the honor to watch her teach that week, happened to be her scheduled observation, but then to see that unfold and how it came to be with the luncheon was great. So a special thanks to Dawn, she's tremendous. And then related to that, our new teachers, we, we hired great new teachers. It's one thing to sit in this room and interview them and ask them questions and we think, you know, these are going to be great teachers, but to see them in action now as I get to observe them, they're, they're great and I'm inspired by them and I'm excited to work alongside them. So there's some talented new teachers we've hired and sectionals, obviously kids off tonight, which John mentioned. So those are going to start to really heat up and all the scores here going forward, so it's a fun time here.
Man, I got a text from Jay Wolka today and he said he feels very bad, that he did not, let me, let me make sure I get this correctly, because I don't want to forget it. So Jay Wolka was the presenter for the Hall of Fame evening and I think it went very well.
It was great. A lot of people said it was, it was the best one I can remember.
So he wanted to make sure that he acknowledges you and he said, thank you, and he believes that you're doing a great job on behalf of the OA school community, so.
I appreciate you sharing that.
That's from, from Jay Wolka and I think I forgot to mention you last time I was the MC, so I'm sorry again. But it hadn't happened. So thank you for participating on that committee as well. I think it's a, shines a light on what Oakfield is really all about, so thank you.
It was great to hear.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Rob, what do you got going on over there?
All right, well, as you know, in front of you, you have the Chromebook now that the majority of our students have, all the adults have, but the majority of the students, it's the eighth or seventh, thirteenth. So two of you still drop off your old ones here, just so I keep it even one-for-one create here with the pile here. But yeah, you'll find that it's brighter, faster, all the great things about a Chromebook, a little heavier, but it, it comes with performance, so. The only ones left now would be grades eleven and twelve. They will be receiving the ones that we talked about tonight, the two hundred twenty batch. So I would hope by sometime middle of the year or so, we have elevens and twelfths. And then going back those to eighth grade, we'll be covering next, because eighth grade will be the, that's the last one in the budget, they're going to get the new ones. Tied to that is the self-funded Chromebook insurance that we did, very successful. I'd say if last year we had maybe thirty, forty percent, now we're past sixty percent. Parents have participated, realizing, put that twenty dollars in at the beginning of the year and now we have no worries about fees for the rest of the year. So now that we're not paying a third party a cut of that, we can sustain that and use that pool of money to do our repairs, which those repairs are addable as well, so it's really a, a win-win situation with the Chromebook insurance, so we'll continue that. The second thing I'll talk about related to Matt is found a new way to use ParentSquare just yesterday, in fact, right? So we, we realized that our, most of our parents are using their smartphones to check grades online. It's not going to this computer, laptop or desktop as a thing of the past. However, the School to Mobile app doesn't let you look at progress reports with teacher comments and also the ten-week report categories. It just doesn't have that feature. So I put out there in the list room, people said, well, wait a minute, you guys use ParentSquare, right? And I'm like, yeah. And they said, well, that is a great tool. They have something called Secure Docs that securely sends any document that has a student ID on it to the parents involved or guardians involved automatically. We don't have to like send individual emails. We just simply upload a thousand-page document and it looks for all the individual students in it and sends them all out. We in fact then get analytics to see who received them, who opened them. And if they didn't open them, we can send out paper copies to a small handful, instead of sending them out to everybody like we used to do. So since it worked well for the five week, we're thinking we can use it for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-one, thirty, thirty-four. So every five weeks essentially, there's a document that goes out that is more of an active process, instead of a passive process, we're waiting for the parents to look at it. So good way to use ParentSquare. We just came up with that this week, I wanted to share that. And my last thing to share is in the month of November, I'll be presenting at the NICE Day Conference once again. So I'll be representing OA and how we use ClassLink, which is that launch pad that we have, to roster students to basically be digital on day one, is the name of it. So when a new kid enrolls, which it seems like lately we've had a lot of new students enroll in Oakfield, apparently you can see that, which is being registered. So on day one, they get the Chromebook, their Google account, their iRadio account, this, that, that, that. It all populates automatically, because we're using a lot of automatic efficiency tools inside of ClassLink. So I'll be talking about that and showing other districts how they can copy what we're doing here, since we're on year number four of recent questions.
So no, why?
Rob, what's that? It's in Rochester. Rob, what do we do with all the old Chromebooks? They are owned by Bosse's, so if they're still usable, I keep them here for loaners, for pool of loaners. But if they're not usable anymore, they go back to Bosse's and then unfortunately we can't resell them. We can't really do with them, because they're not in asset of ours. But it makes it good, because then I can kind of, if I have a pile of loaners, instead of fixing a Chromebook, I just give them one of those as a loaner and then if that doesn't work, we don't bother fixing them anymore. So they kind of phase their way out. I don't just simply get rid of them, I keep them on hand. But I don't keep a lot of them on hand, because we pay like two dollars per device per year to keep them here. So there's a little bit of an incentive to, you know, get rid of them, like where they're no longer useful to us. And that's it.
Thanks, Rob. I love the whole idea. A kid gets here and they're all set up on the first day sometimes. I love the whole idea, a kid gets here and they're all set up on the first day sometimes, I mean, that's a nightmare. Sometimes it takes days to get a kid.
The trigger is getting them in school tool, and once that happens, everything flows from there.
Love it, yeah, I love it. Okay.
Yeah, wouldn't you get a prior engagement certificate?
Sure. C S E A, uh, this is around this gate, any, any news or updates?
We're happy to be here.
You're not, you're not. Just teasing, thank you for being here, well, thank you. Aiden?
Uh, I don't really have anything new. Sectional football's coming up, I know the girls are playing, so sports are heating up, getting exciting, um, yeah, everything's been good.
Great, great, well, thank you. All right, and business. Be it resolved, that item's eight point two through eight point nine, be approved by consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just real quick, Christine, uh, for the budget amendment down here, this is in regards to, um, our twelve one one class.
The budget amendment is for the twelve one one class that was added after we had finalized the budget, that was kind of like a dream at the end of the year. I, just budgeting for it.
Okay.
It's, um.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay.
Six one one, I'm sorry.
Did you say wrong?
I said wrong, I'm sorry, I hit twelve one one in my brain today.
Yeah, eight point two is the budget amendment for that.
Okay. Anything else, guys? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight point ten, budget transfers be resolved, with the attached listing, budget transfers for the fiscal year ending six thirty, twenty twenty-two, as recommended by the business administrator, be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Be it, uh, item eight point eleven, final equity transfer for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal years, be it resolved, that the following equity allocation on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as recommended by the business minister, be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Uh, communications?
No.
Communications.
I just have one thing for the board on nine point two, just giving you a heads up on an upcoming tenure appointment. The tenure appointment, um, is in for December on this employee. And I'm just giving the board a heads up now, um, as you will, um, have to vote on tenure at the November board meeting. So included is a, is a letter from Matt regarding this employee and I fully support, um, his recommendation.
Okay, I understand. And, uh, discussion around table? Do you have anything tonight, guys? All right, and personnel. Be it resolved, that items eleven point two through eleven point seven be approved by consent agenda, can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I apologize, maybe in your report, John, so you, you mentioned to the, uh, board that there's gonna be cuts this year for modified basketball and I wonder if a couple of our phones are gonna ring, uh, that night or the day after. Maybe for the purpose of the community that does listen, could you just talk about?
Sure, um, so, and, yeah, in talking, in talking with Jeff, um, we have in the past had two teams for boys' modified basketball. This year, our, our section, our, our schools are about half and half. You'll have some schools that will have two teams, you'll have some schools that have just one modified team. What has happened is we run into the issue where, let's say you have twenty-five kids come out and you decide to have one team of thirteen and one team of twelve. The question comes in, do you put all the eighth graders on one team, all the seventh graders on the other? You have to be careful about calling it an A or B team, you know? Where do you put the talent, because some kids are, you know, just more talented than others, do you, do you balance it out? And what happens is it, it, it does get to be a little messy. Because, you know, you have two different coaches, um, you're trying to grow a program and, and you do have kids that do come as, as seventh graders who have never touched a basketball and you have seventh graders that have played, you know, Little League and, and, and all of that. So we are at the point, um, of, and, and looking back at the number of kids in seventh and eighth grade, you know, they're not all gonna make JV. You know, Jeff and I thought that it would be a good idea because I, I do get the phone calls each and every modified season of, of how messy it is and it's, it's kind of the same, gonna, it's gonna be like that for baseball too. You know, you almost have too many kids and, and not that I want to, you know, um, cut kids, but I think we're at the point with our numbers that, um, we need to go back to, you know, having a modified team of fourteen, fifteen kids and when twenty-five come out, um, I did speak to Alex Grace, we talked about possibly having a longer tryout period, like almost a week. Some of these kids, I think, will weed themselves out, but in the end, I, I think there's gonna be cuts. And we're looking at that for baseball as well. Baseball was, was messy, you know, you can't have eighteen, nineteen kids on a team. And then when you try to split them up, um, you know, it, it's, it's tough. So Jeff and I said, I think it's time now, based on our numbers, that we get back. And, and we, we did speak to, you know, Ryan about, you know, this is his program and, and what do you think about that? And he said, I, you know, I think it's, it's at that time where, um, you know, we have enough kids and, uh, you know, I think we're gonna have cuts. I think there's twenty-four kids signed up and, like I said, if we decide to keep, you know, fifteen, um, you're gonna have a handful, handful of, of cuts. But I, I will tell you that, um, the process will be a little longer, um, the kids will be evaluated and, uh, you know, um, I'm sure it'll be a mix of seventh and eighth graders, but it will be based on, you know, talent and moving forward.
So the way that has the potential to shape a program, whether it's baseball or basketball, you mentioned Ryan, will, will varsity coaches for either one of those programs be a part of the evaluation process and, and select kids based on both talent and work?
Yeah, I, I, um, you know, I'll continue to have, I mean, this was a decision that, like I said, we made, um, late last week because, you know, we were looking at the signups. You know, I think Ryan will, will definitely, because modified will actually start later. So based on, you know, their, their schedules, I'm sure Ryan will be, you know, a part of that. The other issue comes in too is, um, we have brought back or I, I think with the, you know, the approval and the support of the board, we are gonna have a modified indoor winter track. We do have about nine kids that signed up for it. That is something too, where I think at this point, where you have maybe the seventh graders who have never picked up a basketball, you know, they have options now where, you know, they can swim, they can do track, there, there's another option for them. Just like I said, over the last few years, there's, there's been some, you know, basketball players and baseball players who this is their first time touching a ball and, um, it, that, that's, that's tough because then you do have kids that have played for years and, and it's hard to balance, balance all of that. So, um, you know, bringing back or, or making available, again, that modified indoor winter track, which is more of an individual sport than a team sport, I think that will help raise some of our numbers, um, as far as those programs go. So, you know, Jeff and I kind of put our heads together and I say, you know, this, I think this is the time that we get back to having a, a modified level of, of one team.
So I would be remiss if I, if I, if I don't say this now, um, I, we, we talked about it at our last meeting and I've thought about it a little bit. Nathan, I'm gonna put you on the spot, you're part of the board and I'm gonna put you, uh, in a situation where you're gonna have to respond here. When you played in seventh grade, in eighth grade, were you on an A team or a B team?
So I was actually, I'm gonna bring this up too, I was put on, it was, when I went up, it was true mod A, mod B, the best kids played A. You know, the kids that needed work played B. I was on mod B as a seventh grader and, like, I wasn't happy with that at all and it made me work. And I actually made JV and played on JV as an eighth grader. So I went from mod B as a seventh grader and one year I skipped mod A and played JV, so.
And so.
And that was a true, like, they split you up on skill, it wasn't great, it was.
But at, but at the time though, if there were cuts, do you think you possibly could have gotten caught? Is there a possibility?
I mean, for sure, yeah.
So you wouldn't be a starter on, uh, a varsity team this year if you got caught probably, or possibly, right?
I mean, I, I definitely would've come out again in eighth grade, cause I, I did, I played, you know, the school team started in third grade, I started in third grade. So I mean, I played all the way up through and it just happened to, you know, be that way that maybe in seventh grade I wasn't as mature as others and, you know? So, but I didn't, I don't, um, I think it was a good thing for my basketball career that I was on that team because then I ended up being more of a leader on the mod B team. I had to be more, a more contributor than I would've been on A team, so I actually think it helped me a lot.
So I, I, I struggle, uh, with cuts and it's not because I'm a lovey dovey, huggy, gatty guy, which I am, uh, but I, uh, I did, but, uh, but I, I just, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time, uh, squaring this up because we have two coaches. And I, I get it, I, I get what you're saying, I, I understand that it's not always clean. I think modified baseball was messier, um, if, if we really wanted to get down to brass tacks than, than the basketball was. I think more referrals came out of modified baseball for behavior than, than basketball was. I, 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 I don't know where I stand and I'm, and this isn't something we're voting on, but I, I'd like to just make it known that I just, I'm not feeling super comfortable. With cuts currently.
Problem is though, when do you start cutting them? So then you get a kid that gets carried through for modified and then they hit JV.
JV they get caught. Yeah, JV they get caught.
But I think even Aiden, just cause you get cut this year doesn't mean you quit. You try harder and you come back next year and it gives you that motivation to go, depending on the kid, right?
Depending on the kid.
And it's not like there's not a million different travel basketball leagues around here where if you don't get picked up on the school team, you can't play some results. I do agree that baseball was definitely much more of a mess than basketball is and I think that's probably where the should've started, uh, was there. But, uh, it is a tough, you know, you hate to see, especially if you're trying to make up a team of seventh and eighth graders. So seven, you know, you could have a bunch of really good eighth graders.
Well, that's the thing.
You know, and so, so you cut all the seventh graders, you know, and then.
But that's what we're looking at possibly, like, we've got a group of sixth graders right now that are moving up, that's a really strong team, I, I don't know how.
Right.
Well, in speaking, in speaking with Jeff and Ryan and, and talking about, you know, if you have twenty-five kids come out and you're gonna keep, you know, fourteen or fifteen, you're gonna keep the top fourteen or fifteen, um, grade level is not really going to matter. And, and I'll, and I'll be honest with you, I coached modified for many years, if I have equal ability in seventh and eighth grade, guess what, I'm taking the seventh grader. So I, you know, I'm not saying that either one is, is a better decision. But after the last few years, um, we just feel that, you know, at least Jeff and I feel, um, that moving in this direction, I think not only will help the basketball program, and you had mentioned that, you know, there are some kids that play for two years and then here they are JV and they get cut. And now they're going, now what do I do? I think starting earlier where you have the opportunity of, okay, well, jeez, I guess I didn't make basketball, now I can do indoor track or I can do swimming, I think will actually help. I just, uh, like I said, I, I think, I think like Matt said, on both ends, I'm sure I'll get phone calls saying, why'd you cut my kid? And I think there are other people that will call and say, I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing this.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure you're gonna be involved, but I'm not trying to refuse both sides.
Right, right.
Saying if it's, if it's a, if we're saying it's a mess and, and when we have interest there, how can we have better supervision? And, and that's, and I guess that's my, my, where I'm going back to this on this, if we, how do we fix the mess of interest here? How can we streamline this? I hate to use the word mess because that implies that coaches aren't doing their jobs and I don't believe that that's true. I believe that they're doing great jobs, uh, at, at, so if we have such an interest, how, how can we capitalize on the interest?
The, the other thing that we did talk about is, um, you know, when you have, when you have two separate teams and maybe they play that way for two years, now you bring them up to the JV level. If I was on, you know, the A team and B team, and I'm not saying the A team is better, cause usually we try to split the, the talents to make the teams, you know, maybe back, you know, many years ago, um, it was that way. But what, but what happens is, do you want these kids playing together as seventh and eighth graders for a couple of years and then going up to JV and they're, and they've been with each other? The problem is when you bring two different groups together, um, and then, you know, you do make some cuts, you're gonna have kids now that are freshmen that have never played with each other at, at the JV level, you know? And again, there's a lot of pros and cons to all.
Well, I think we go back and forth, I, 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 a thousand different ways.
Is that John, or maybe you carry more cans, but you only dress somebody for a game?
And, and Jeff and I are, are against that too.
I, I don't know, I don't know of school districts though that don't have.
You know, um, and, and I think there's, there's.
Modified level.
There's split.
I, I really don't, I don't know of other teams, school districts that don't have modified, two modified teams.
They're split. According to Jeff, that this year it's like split down the middle, that you have teams that only have one, and maybe it's based on numbers.
Cause, and that's what I would say too, is that what are their numbers? If it's split, because if it's split, maybe half of the teams have the numbers and the other half don't.
That's kind of what we're trying to get away from, you know, I don't wanna have, you know, twenty modified kids come out and you say, you know what, let's not have a cut, let's have one team, but you know, these ten will play this game and then these ten, like, we don't even wanna do the rotation.
Well, I don't even say that, you, you have your starters that you dress. And to me, that's like, okay, you guys can be on the team, but we're taking the best kids to the game.
That's what I was, I said you were on.
Not rotating kids, the best kids are going to the game. And if you wanna get on that team, you try harder during the week during practice. Would that work though?
I'd say there's pros and cons to that.
Yeah, I think whatever you do, there's gonna be pros and cons, right?
I think that we had more options, if we had allowed for options too, if they weren't, if they didn't make the cut, there's other options for them to participate in some activity.
Cause the travel thing, I don't ca, I don't, I don't care for that because the travel thing costs money and, and I'm sorry, like, if we're now gonna have programs that are based on the number of years that kids have played travel sports, I'm not okay with that.
I also don't think you're gonna make a travel team if you got cut from your local school team.
Correct, like, let's, let's be real here, unless you're willing to pay the big bucks, cause that'll take you sometimes if you.
I think some, for some of these kids though, getting cut, this, the school is the only place for them to practice the sport. So would there be opportunities for intramurals or things like that? Because some of these kids, if they get cut, like, where are they gonna get better to try out for the team next year? You know what I mean? So maybe there's opportunity for intramural or gym time, but.
I think we're, we're at the point where there is such a discrepancy between a kid that has played and a kid that hasn't even passed the basketball, that I, I do.
But John, you're saying too though, that like, so if seventh and eighth graders are gonna get pulled together, kids that are in seventh grade have played for a while.
Sure.
And then there's kids in eighth grade that have played for a long time.
Sure.
And you're saying you're gonna take the seventh grader every time?
No, I'm saying that you're gonna, you're gonna take, if there's twenty-five kids, you're gonna take your top fifteen.
But then, but then you're, you're getting rid of the kids that.
Or top fourteen, I mean, you do have to draw a line in the sand.
You're taking away development for an eighth grader that could possibly develop into a ninth grade JV player.
Well, and I'm not saying cuts are, what, okay, what I'm saying though is, you're gonna have twenty-five kids come out. That first day of practice, there'll be three kids that won't come back because of the running, the demand, all of that. In the end, you're probably gonna end up cutting six or seven kids. There's, there's a level of, and, and over the last few years, it's been very frustrating because when you have a team where you do have a kid. because when you have a team where you do have a kid that's played and knows the game, and you have a kid that says, I don't even know what a basketball is, and they're out there on the floor together, you're not really doing much, there isn't much of a growth for these modified kids.
You are having been through modified sports for the last two years. There is a bit of a frustration that we're trying to get all these kids in, and you are taking away from the advanced development of the kids that are, you're taking playing away, time away from kids that are developing into the JV.
That's why I like the skill base. I mean, that's just because of what I went up through, but the skill base, mod A, mod B, I think that, you know, because then your kids that have played, they're playing against better competition, they're practicing against better competition, and they're getting better, you know what I mean? And so then maybe the seventh grader who isn't maybe there all physically, he might love the game, know the game, but if he's, you know, late developing, he's going to have no shot against an eighth grader that's maybe, you know, earlier or bigger, you know what I mean?
Good point.
I think just an explanation to the community, so something they can see, you know, is a start, but there might be, might be more to come on it. So I apologize for letting that slip my mind.
Yeah, I know, too, by the way.
But it's. No, and if that is something that is at the forefront of Coach Grace's mind and moving forward, you know, like I said, modified will start, you know, a week or so later. And it's right out to the parents of, you know, if we have twenty-five kids, and maybe that twenty-five turns to twenty-two. And maybe there aren't ten cuts, maybe there's five or six. But I think from our perspective, if we're communicating that, saying, you know, plan on cuts, I do think.
So, John, the kids that get cut from basketball, though, would still be able to join swimming or track.
Absolutely.
So just because they started down one path, they still have time to switch, too. So I think that's good to let the kids know, hey, this isn't going to work out, but you do have other options as well.
Correct. And I do believe, and I want to say for modified, the girls is first, I'm going to have to clarify with Jeff because we talked about how you could do two of the three sports. And I think.
What's the boys?
And the boys is in the back. So if you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, when Jeff said that last meeting, that you could almost do two of the three, that if you were.
Right. What was it?
So the girls would be January, so if the boys were January, that track, that winter track would have already started, right?
No, I think the track started later. The track was like in the middle.
It was both.
I thought it was swimming.
It was both December and January.
Track and then basketball, wasn't it?
You got caught in January, it'd be kind of too late to come back. I don't know when the boys starts. You don't have to know, do you?
You're on the spot tonight, though.
I don't know when the boys starts, but I know that the indoor track was right in the middle of both swimming and basketball.
Okay, well, I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, sorry.
Good job, tracker.
Wait a second. So we were, help me out here, guys. We were in the middle of.
We're in the first part of that. I'll let you know when someone wants this tonight, and I get phone calls tomorrow morning.
You cruised through eleven-seven, not through eleven-eight.
Yes.
Thank you. Eleven-seven, so we started at eleven-eight. Permanent placement for maintenance mechanic be resolved that Aaron Crawford be made a permanent employee effective November ninth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Congratulations and thank you, Aaron. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah, he's awesome.
Eleven point nine, permanent placement for groundskeeper be resolved that John Kennedy be made a permanent employee effective October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, John. And congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven point ten, permanent placement for motor mechanic be resolved that Christopher Thompson be made a permanent employee effective November thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you again, Christopher. And congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven eleven, teacher assistant be resolved that Melissa Waldner be appointed to a three-year probationary position of teacher assistant effective ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-two and ending ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. To executive session, be it resolved that the Board of Education exclusively will enter into executive session at, ah, gosh, my eyes are, where, seven fifty-six? Be it resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session at seven fifty-six for the purpose of discussing employment of a particular individual, and the board will remain in executive session for the purpose of discussing and negotiating the superintendent's contract. Can I get a motion?
So.
Minister Lamb, second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Allow entry executive session.